I'd like to welcome you to this meeting. And I'd first like to say thank you and welcome to Dr. Hornig. Your first meeting. Glad you are here. Excited. And with that, can we have roll call Ms. Byron?
Yes. Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinton.
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hornig, do you know of any adjustments to the agenda at this time?
No ma'am, no adjustments.
Hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I would entertain approval of the agenda, please.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second? A second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Dropping down to the consent agenda, the minutes and financial reports of... Let's see where the minutes are. The approval of the minutes for May 22nd, 2022. Work session, June 6th, 2022. Regular meeting in June 8th, 2022. Special call meeting, the June 22 financial report and the monthly school nutrition fund report is requested. Can I have a motion?
I move to accept these documents as presented. However, it was the May 23rd, 2022 draft minutes.
Okay, thank you, sorry. All right. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. The monthly operating bills. I'm not sure who was due to review those this time.
I'm not sure of the rotation, but I can make the motion. I did look over.
Okay, I did too. But, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the monthly operating expenses of $4,800,983.10.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we will drop down and we will open public comment.
Madam Chair, point of privilege?
Yes.
I know this is going to come up in public comments, so I just want to address a few things before we start. In regards to the amended policy BDDH-R, we as a board did not limit the public time for public comment. We only gave permission to the Chair to limit it to three hours if she feels it necessary. This will be based on each meeting individually and if she feels that things are getting out of hand. We are public servants and need to be treated as such. We as a board and all citizens should have should be allowed to speak during a meeting without interruption. I know that many of you have I know that many of you have interpreted this change as us limiting public comment, but that is not the case. If you have questions to what is actually being voted on, I would just ask instead of assuming or reading parts of it. As for the cutoff of 3:00 PM, this gives Laura Byron the time needed to get the list of speakers together so that she does not miss anyone. We will still allow for signups at the time of the meeting. We would encourage that you sign up before 7 o'clock start time so that the meeting is not interrupted. And I would also like to ask how many speakers we have this evening and...
There are currently seventeen.
Okay, all right. So I hope this clears up any confusion. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. And at this time, Ms. Byron, who is our first speaker?
Ms. Laura Daniel.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a suggestion. Could we have the second person so they could line up? Because we're losing a lot of time between here. So could we call two at a time or something like that?
Sure.
The next speaker will be Mr. Allen Daniel.
Good evening. Representation matters. Let me say that again. Representation matters. Yet the school board sitting up there does not represent nor reflects this community completely. Instead, what we have had since January is a school board that consists of certain members that are pushing their political agendas, their religion and their narrow-minded views on a community that does not completely align with that agenda or views. Let me remind you again that representation matters. And if you fail to have a board accurately reflect its community, then at the very least, that board should be listening to the communities they represent, especially those voices they don't agree with and especially those people they don't accurately reflect. Instead, what we have before us is a board that wants to cover up our school's racism problem with a Band-Aid, all while pushing the racist agenda, i.e. the racist resolutions recently passed. Because after all, they have to protect their white Christian children in the disguise of parental rights. Just because a board member may call a parent after hearing about several racist accounts doesn't absolve you of your own guilt of writing that racist resolution. Perhaps you should remind yourself and your fellow board members about FERPA. Perhaps you should stop forwarding your emails to your spouses or to your private emails. Perhaps the board should discuss ethics, code of conduct and their FOIA violations. Perhaps instead of holding secret meetings and pushing for a new CTE building that only a few in our community want, you actually focus on what our county needs, such as higher teacher pay, the racism and homophobic problems that exist, more bus drivers and actual high schools that can accommodate our county, and the list goes on. Perhaps instead of pushing your religion and your personal beliefs, instead of being guest speakers at isolated political groups or private Facebooks, you take a step back, do your homework and realize we already have policies in place that cover your sexually explicit material and that homosexuality is not sexually explicit. These policies that you've passed and are trying to pass hurt our kids, our school and our community, all in the name of parental rights. What about the parental rights of those that are demanding our kids? All kids are represented in schools too, in curriculum, in a book that you state is sexually explicit because it features a homosexual couple, yet you've never had a problem with homosexual or heterosexual couples being featured. You're okay with a white kid on the cover, but man, the instant we start having black authors tell stories about featuring their voices or their life experiences, you want to silence them. The fact is, your views and your political agenda are your religion, your sexuality and your skin tone does not even begin to represent this community in its entirety. You can try to ignore that people are speaking up before you. You can ignore the emails. You can make yourself feel better by telling yourself this doesn't represent your district or the county. But the truth is, it does. Our county, our districts are made up of more than just what you consist of. It's your job to represent more than that. And if you can't do that, then please step aside so we can, the community can get someone that can represent and will listen to the community. Thank you.
After Mr. Daniel, it'll be Juliette Daniel.
Superintendent Hornig, school board members, I am here to talk about the resolutions again. Please, take a look around and you introduced these resolutions back in April and passed one in May. We are not going away. We will not be silenced despite the best effort by Hopkins of the proposal to limit public comment to thirty minutes. We consistently have crowds here and it will not end until both resolutions are gone. If one person in our society is oppressed, then we all are oppressed. There's a term, silence is violence, which goes along with another term. All it takes for evil to succeed is for good men to do nothing. This is why I have to speak out. This is why I cannot stand by. This is not a filibuster. This is civic engagement, letting the board know that we disagree with actions that they have made demanding change. Yes, demanding. Tonight, you will hear from many people, probably from both sides. Some are very angry. I too am angry. I am not, I am angry that no one, I mean, no one on this board has brought back up the code of conduct and amended it and reverted it back to its original wording. It is outrageous that it was ever changed from upholding and enforcing all laws to instead raid, consider all laws, as if it was giving permission to break laws. All of us, all of you voted yes and any of you can bring it back up for vote and fix it. I am angry that yet again, you have not brought back up the divisive content resolution for a revote to strike it down. This resolution is racist. Even if the author of those voted for it do not recognize it as such, we are here telling you it is. Also, the fact that the school board has been hearing about racist incidents in the school, have heard reports that white students would yell out "white power" in the hallways of the high school and that there were many other incidences in the middle schools, yet three of you still passed a resolution that is racist in nature. And yes, trying to minimize someone's experiences because of their race is racism. And that is what the policy ultimately aims to do. I am angry that the sexually explicit content resolution is still postponed and hasn't been brought up and stricken down. I know that the board is waiting to see what the concern, what comes from the BOE, but the existence, but the existing one is yet another horribly written resolution that doesn't need to exist. It's anti-LGBTQIA and appears to be written from the perspective of Christian nationalism. There are so many avenues in which to attack this legally, it is almost laughable. I have a quote for you. As I read this, guess who I'm quoting? "The national government will maintain and defend the foundation on which the power of its nation rests. It will offer strong protection to Christianity as the very basis of the collective morality. Today, Christians stand as the head of our country. We want to fill our culture again with the Christian spirit. We want to burn out all the recent immoral development and literature, entertainment and the press. In short, we want to burn out the poison of immorality which has been entered into our whole life and culture as a result of legal excess during the recent years." Adolf Hitler. From that, you should be able to tell what side you have been on in World War II.
Time is up.
After Juliette, it is Will Daniel.
Hi, my name is Juliette Daniel and I thankfully just graduated from OCHS. I'm from District Five. And first, I'll be talking about the recently passed resolution on divisive content. During previous school board meetings, you had parents and students sharing about the racism they've dealt within our school systems. And with the resolution that's passed, it seems as though instead of dealing with the racism experienced by students of color within our school systems, you are enabling the racism reinforced by textbooks written only by white people. So I look to the board and any member who voted for that resolution, especially Mr. Hopkins, my own representative, I beg you to reconsider what your district, the students and the community wants and revote on the policy, but this time vote no. The way to teach tolerance of diversity is to tolerate diversity. I can assure you, the class that just graduated has mostly turned eighteen and are registering to vote and are waiting to see what you choose to do, what all of you choose to do, so they can decide whether or not to keep you in your position. When the board fails to represent its community, it fails its community. Many people have previously came up here and said not to listen to the students, but that's exactly who you should be listening to. You're supposed to advocate for them. You're supposed to have their best interests at heart and right now, the board is failing them. I'd also urge you guys when school starts back up to go to the high school and talk to students, all types of students, not a select few, about your ideas and resolutions so you can get real feedback. However, many students are intimidated by you. That's why it's such a big deal that so many are speaking out. You have kids literally begging out, crying. There are children. Students in tears because of you, because they are afraid and you all do not listen. Half of you stare at them blankly as they talk at this podium with tears streaming down their face. Show some empathy, please. They need to feel seen. They need to feel heard. This leads me into the sexually explicit resolution. You already meet the requirements for this resolution, so it's unnecessary and is a direct attack on the LGBTQ+ community. I'd also like to thank Ms. Page, who was basically in tears expressing how she understood how detrimental the passing of that resolution could be. The students felt heard by you and touched by your sibling story. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for sticking up for us and thank you for your compassion. And to the rest of the school board, how could you even consider passing a resolution like that after hearing another board member in tears? I understand not everyone was going to vote to pass the resolution and I thank you. But the rest of you, my heart breaks for the lack of empathy you exhibit. I also would like to touch again on how hard it is to speak out. I spoke at the May School Board meeting about how I'm bisexual and a few days later woke up to a million different texts that I had been quoted in the Washington Post and it had my quote and it said, end quote, said Juliette Daniel, a bisexual senior at OCHS, end quote. Thankfully, I'm confident enough in my sexuality, which is why I brought it up at the last public comments. So being outed by the Post wasn't detrimental, but I can never take that back now. Anytime an employee searches my name, they will now know my sexuality. I just hope you all understand how hard it is truly to speak out. Not to mention how last meeting, a group of students walked to their cars and were approached and verbally attacked at night by an older woman who disagreed with what they said during public comment. Students are risking their lives to speak up to you. So listen, please.
After Will speaks, Ms. Kim Hoosier will be the next speaker.
Hi, I'm William Daniel. I grew to Lucas Grove Middle School and I use they/them pronouns. I know, shocking. I'm exposing the other children that some people are non-binary, like me. LGBT kids read straight books all the time and it doesn't make them straight. So, why would it make straight kids LGBT from reading a LGBT book? Unless if they were born liking who they like and reading or seeing other LGBT merely helps them realize that it's okay to be LGBT and that there are other people like them that feel the same way. Now, I'll read a few comments on the recent Washington Post article. One person stated, "Seems to me that most parents know how their children identify. If they don't, it's because the kid has something to fear at home." Another person said, "Since every single person of every age has both sexual orientation and gender identity, you basically don't want teachers ever speaking to their students or talk about any person anywhere. That makes it harder to teach about anything." I have one last comment I'd like to read. Pronouns are not sexual. Also, just because a kid is gender colorful doesn't mean that they are more sexually advanced. We will, we will not stop speaking out and we will not be silenced. We will get what the majority of the community wants. We want equality.
After Ms. Hoosier, the speaker will be Jude Milton.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kim Hoosier and I am a parent, a taxpayer, a voter and an educator myself. And I have served in various roles in this community in the form of public education, on PTO, boards, school dances, volunteering in a number of capacity. I have seen and experienced what my children have gone through in Orange County High School. And here I am, again tonight, with the same message as my previous meetings. Before January, I did not have to come to all the school board meetings. I did not have to attend and watch the agendas of school board meetings because I knew what was happening here was overall to benefit all students in Orange County. This all changed with the recent election of new members of this board and specifically when Ms. Quinton proposed the two very harmful and prejudiced resolutions. Both of these resolutions send the same message. It says that we at Orange County Public Schools do not care about our students. It says we do not place an importance on equality and/or equity. It sends the clear message that our school board members would rather come in here week after week and play politics rather than to have informed and educated decisions that are helpful to all students. By passing the divisive content resolution, you are telling students that race and our racialized history does not matter. And if you're a person of color, then your experiences are not as important as a white person. How can we as a community stand by and allow this level of prejudice and discrimination to happen? By proposing the sexually explicit resolution, you are yet again sending the message that anyone that does not adhere to your gender norms does not matter and should not be counted and should not be included in our schools. These are a very harmful message that you are sending to my son and all of the Orange County students. I come here tonight as a part of a larger constituency that feel that you must recall the divisive content resolution and you must take no further action to pass the ridiculously uninformed and uneducated sexually explicit resolutions. These resolutions are only causing conflict and division in our community and you should be ashamed of your actions. Your job is not to push some narrow-minded political agenda, but rather do what is best for all Orange County students. It's about time that you do the job that you were elected to do and stop allowing your personal agenda to harm our schools, our students and our community. Thank you.
After Jude Milton, we'll have Griffin Floyd.
Good evening. My name is Jude Milton and I'm a rising junior at Orange County High School. I'm coming to speak yet again against the uneducated, vague, ill-informed and destructive resolutions that have been proposed by Ms. Chelsea Quinton. You as a board unfortunately, unfortunately decided to pass the divisive content resolution, which especially is a slap in the face to all students of color. These resolutions are causing nothing but division and are harmful to me and my peers and everyone else in Orange County. Your resolutions are discriminatory and more importantly, are harmful to everyone. I'm here as part of a large group of concerned students and I demand that you recall the divisive content resolution, which ultimately tells Orange County students that you do not care about them or what they have to learn. I urge you to not have any further discussion on the sexually explicit resolution, which was, which was only created to, for conflict. And again, sorry. Which only was created and has brought nothing but conflict and chaos and goes against the whole code of ethics that you were elected to follow when elected. As a student, I would be directly impacted by those misguided, ill-informed and regressive resolutions. As a board, it is obvious that you care more about your own narrow-minded political agendas over the education of Orange County High School, of Orange County students. Do the right thing, recall the resolution and be halfway decent people. Thank you.
After Griffin, we have Ms. Ellen Wessel.
Tonight, I'm going to speak to those of you who might label themselves constitutional conservatives. I currently reside in District One. In January 2022, the Orange County School Board voted to postpone graduation by a week. In the face of overwhelming backlash, you overturned that measure days later. The precedent is set. If you go against the wishes of the people and cause fierce immediate resistance, the best action is to reevaluate and overturn said policies. The Declaration of Independence discusses consent of the governed, that all power to rule comes from the people and the people's wishes must be respected because of this. It's one of the founding values of our democracy. Despite this, some of you refuse to reevaluate the divisive content resolutions passed on May 9th, actively ignore acts of racial hatred against children in your schools and continue to work to make Orange County a dangerous place for LGBT youth. Instead of listening to your constituents, you move to limit public comment in response to your actions, abusing your power by ignoring the will of the people and infringing upon First Amendment rights to free speech, assembly and petition. The Supreme Court said in 1969 that students do not, quote, "shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate," end quote. You will note that self-identification, something you've attempted to limit, is part of the right to expression. The need for representation is another value central to American political philosophy. The school board is not meant to be a politically partisan office and yet you treat it as such, enforcing your political and religious beliefs on children not yet old enough to vote for themselves. In the 1770s, patriots cried for no taxation without representation. In 2022, we are calling for no education without representation and the removal of untoward political influence from public school. In 1972, the Supreme Court ruled that the First Amendment's Establishment Clause, which codified the separation of church and state into law, applied to public schools. Melissa Anderson, Chelsea Quinton, Jim Hopkins, you violate that clause as you attempt to impose your Christo fascist religious and political beliefs on schoolchildren. Ms. Anderson, it's ironic that you complain of us making assumptions when assumptions are all that your platform is built on. You don't care about the kids. You don't care about the teachers or the schools. All you care about is your own twisted views, views that aren't even Christian. You are sick fundamentalists who pick and choose and weaponize the Bible to advance your own hateful rhetoric. How can you call yourselves Americans when you refuse to acknowledge the values, consent of the governed, the need for representation and the separation of church and state inherent to this country from its first breath? You certainly aren't Christian as you refuse to love your neighbors. You've shown this year that you will overturn policies if the people disagree. I've outlined how your current actions violate the law and the Constitution repeatedly. We're here, we disagree and if you don't overturn your racist and homophobic actions, we're ready to remove you from office. The law is on our side.
I'm here to represent the older part of the population.
Let her call the next.
After Ms. Wessel, we have Ella Williams.
Good evening. Am I, am I, it's on, yes, okay. At the May 9th School Board meeting, I and dozens of others implored you to vote no on these two vaguely worded resolutions. After an avalanche of protests against adopting either of these divisive, destructive resolutions, you voted three to two to approve the so-called divisive content resolution and postpone action on the parental notification statement. My goodness, this is the internet age. Kids can find out anything they want to, online or from their peers. The classroom is where children should be able to safely discuss controversial issues, study sometimes unpleasant history and gain critical thinking skills as it becomes ever more difficult to tell the real from the fabricated. Instead of what you should be doing, that is fostering a school culture based on mutual respect and empathy, these resolutions recklessly foment division and deep mistrust. They drive teachers away and brew low morale. Quite frankly, I believe they reflect nostalgia for the 1950s when Jim Crow reigned supreme and life options were limited for everyone except white males. Please stop with a pointless distraction. I urge you to rescind the divisive content resolution and vote no on parental notification.
After, after Ms. Williams, the next speaker is Sarah Jaeger.
Hi, my name is Ella Williams. First of all, I am bisexual and gender fluid. I'm not by any means in the closet, but I'm still putting myself on the line by being here and saying this today. I have many friends with parents who would genuinely want to harm me mentally and physically if they heard that. And I am praying to every god out there that they don't see this. I'll say that again. I am putting myself in danger by talking up here. I am putting my friends in danger by talking up here. That takes us to my next point. If my friends' parents figure out who I'm talking about, they could get seriously hurt. I'm not kidding. My friends, the people I care about most in the world, could get seriously injured if you put your plan into motion. Many people, including them, can and will be kicked out of their houses or treated horribly. That's going to be on your hands, all of you. It will be your fault that literal children are going to be subjects of harm. In some cases, this could be the cause of death for many people. It could be family members or even themselves. Just do a quick Google search, which I'm sure none of you thought to do. According to the TrevorProject.org, LGBTQ+ youth are four times as likely to kill themselves. And as recently as this year, a national survey went out and has shown that 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. If seeing those statistics aren't enough for you, 1.8 million LGBTQ youth seriously consider and at least one attempts every 45 seconds. That means two people have tried in the time that I've been talking. To a different point, this is a literal privacy violation. Why would you force teachers to tell parents about a student's identity? Why would you, which could once again get somebody killed, when you don't even do anything about students who drink alcohol in school or show up to classes high, as if being gay is more of a crime than underage smoking and drinking? You're just criminalizing liking someone of the same sex, and it's the reason we get harassed and made fun of. You are not just affecting us, but future generations too. Kids are going to think it's okay to be cruel to people if they're LGBTQ because that's wrong. Why else would they get in trouble for it? And I'm sure all of you think that it is wrong to be gay, since if you didn't, we wouldn't be here right now. Being gay does not stop you from learning. Being trans does not make you unable to finish your schoolwork. So why make this such a big deal? Fear will stop learning not being gay. If this goes through, we will be terrified of if we look gay enough for our parents to be called, constantly thinking that you might come home with all your stuff in the lawn, ultimately thinking, is it even worth it anymore? Is living a life of constant fear even worth it? With my time left, I want to say thank you to all the people who came here today. Thank you for showing up for what's right. And just remember that I love you, and I'm proud of all of you for being here today. Thank you.
I want to start off. I'm sorry. After Ms. Jaeger, Janie Latham will be the next speaker.
I want to start off defining two terms often mistakenly used interchangeably: equality versus equity. Equality is the state of being equal, especially in status, rights, and opportunities. Equity is the quality of being fair and impartial. Equality means each individual or group of people is given the same exact resources or opportunities. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. I want to point out that your recently passed policy change on divisive content and the ones still up for vote regarding gender and sexual identity undermine our pursuit of equity in public schools. I want to remind the board that the parents and children of Orange County, as you've seen tonight, have not forgotten your racist and divisive policy change essentially banning all discussion of race. This intentionally avoids all teachable moments aimed at providing equity for all in our public schools. My parents, while I believed they had good intentions, sheltered me, aiming to raise a good person shielded from bad influences. As an adult, I now realize that I was not exposed to much ethnic or socioeconomic diversity. Discussions of slavery, racism, and social justice were often just glossed over, as it was just assumed that those were different times, and now we were good people working towards equality for all. Now, I am starting to understand and consciously challenge my unconscious biases. Learning from the mistakes of others, I've chosen to try to raise my children differently. I want them to know the full truth of history, be exposed to rich diversity, understand the experience and perspective of all others, especially when they are different from themselves, and to not shy away from difficult conversations. I acknowledge that I am constantly learning myself, and I want my children to do the same. Please acknowledge that the majority of this jurisdiction is consistently speaking up against your two resolutions. Social-emotional learning is simply about teaching children to be good people, able to regulate their emotions and relate to others. Acknowledge the partisan agenda behind your resolutions and reverse the first, then reject the second. Otherwise, you are continuing to show your true intention of further sowing division and hatred by keeping our youth ignorant of important social justice issues and human decency. I urge the board to spend time in the classrooms yourselves, observing and actually speaking with the teachers, and not just the ones that you know agree with you politically. Ask them how they feel about your resolutions and how it will impact their daily ability to teach. If you made these resolutions with the true intention of showing children that they are intrinsically equal despite differences in appearance, race, gender identity, or sexual orientation, then be honest enough to admit your mistakes in the wording and intention of these resolutions. Let's work towards equity, not just equality. Listen to your constituents, look deep into your hearts, and please make the right decision in the interest of all of our children.
After Ms. Latham, the next speaker will be Michael Lemon.
I'm here to share some research regarding the sexually explicit materials resolution proposed by Ms. Quinton. Let's begin with requiring schools to notify parents of healthcare services and involve in critical decisions affecting students' physical, mental, and emotional well-being, including but not limited to self-identification. Compelling school counselors to inform parents of gender or sexual identity of students violates their professional ethics. In fact, the American School Counsel Association states transgender and nonconforming students have the right to decide when, with whom, and to what extent to share private information. School counselors promote affirmation, respect, and equality, or equal opportunity for all individuals regardless of gender identity or gender expression. School counselors encourage a safe and affirming school environment and promote awareness of and education on issues related to transgender and gender nonconforming students. OC's new draft resolution goes beyond ignoring educational professional ethics. It violates student rights. The National Education Association says in legal guidance on transgender students' rights, "School officials must not disclose personal information about a transgender student without their consent." The ACLU notes, "It is against the law for school officials to disclose a student's sexual orientation or gender identity to parents or other school staff, even if the student is open about their sexual identity or gender orientation with friends at school. School officials may think they're doing the right thing, but revealing a student's sexual orientation or gender identity to their parents not only violates the student's privacy rights, but can open an LGBT child to hostility, rejection, and even violence from their parents." Now, let's consider the resolution statement that students shall not be subjected, but not limited, to curriculum, materials, and discussions related to sexual orientation, gender identity, and any other sexually explicit subject without explicit consent from their parents. Can the history of equality be covered without acknowledging gender or the existence of LGBT people? If the discussion in high school turns to prom, are all students equally able to discuss their prom plans, dates, and outfits? Can a kindergartner bring in a picture of two mommies to show and tell? Can all teachers have a picture of their family at school? The ACLU notes in the Know Your Rights for LGBT Students, "Some schools try to silence students who express their opinions about LGBT issues. If you go to public school, you have a constitutional right to express your views and identity." I implore you to use your leadership to steer Orange County schools away from policies steeped in fear-based politics. This resolution is not only bad for education, but likely to cost Orange County taxpayers when challenged in court. Simply put, this resolution is at odds with the current guidance from the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. Don't take my word for it. I'll email the unabridged version of this with links to all of you.
After Mr. Lemon, Liberty Chavez will be the next speaker.
Before I begin, I wanted to address something that another young lady said. That, I know there was at least one policeman here. After the meeting and after the policies voted on, when people exit, could you have like an officer stand outside? Because in the meeting before last, an adult woman approached my daughter, started arguing with her, telling her how she was wrong, and my daughter tried to be the adult and walked to her car, and she followed her, saying, "I didn't mean to frighten you. I didn't mean to scare you. You're just wrong." And that's, this is the place for discussion, not out there. And you should at least protect our children that do show up here as they can, as they're leaving. That's.
Yes. Bill?
So, my name is Michael Lemon, and I am the father of a bisexual, beautiful young lady, Jay Lemon, and I couldn't be more proud of her. I've researched a lot of the situations that have involved this topic, and some of the stats that I will go over, I'm going to try to state the script this time, can be found on parents.com. And this was why we need to stop outing the LGBTQIA+ community. Revealing the identities of gay students has a major impact on their mental health, safety, and potential for self-harm. In surveys of 16,000 students conducted by the Human Rights Campaign and the University of Connecticut, students described the fear of being outed as extremely stressful, with 43% refusing to report being bullied in school because of their sexual identity for fear of being publicly outed. These students are already at an increased risk for anxiety, depression, and suicide. If a teacher is given the responsibility to out them to their parents, it will compromise their safety and have a detrimental impact on their mental and physical health, as well as their ability to learn and succeed in school. I was unaware of this, but as far as homelessness in the youth population in our country, the gay community comprises 45% of all homeless youth, and when they were interviewed, half of these kids said they were kicked out of their home by unsupportive parents. That's almost one in four homeless youths were kicked out of their homes when their parents found out that they were not heterosexual. The Biden administration recently released updated guidance strongly outlining Title IX protections for the LGBTQIA+ community. Against gender discrimination within federally funded schools, students have a constitutional right to be protected and the right to privacy, which includes the right not to be outed by their school. In August 2020, the American Civil Liberties Union issued a letter to the superintendents and principals in public schools across the country. They reported that it is illegal to disclose a student's sexual orientation or gender identity, even to the student's parents, without their consent and permission. Safety should always come first and be the highest priority for our children. Schools have a responsibility to protect our children. Outing them violates that responsibility and the professional code of conduct. I ask you in good conscience, can you honestly say that requiring teachers to out students will somehow help their learning, or the learning of the straight students for that matter? If so, you need to provide documentation that supports that. And please, no more quotes from Ted Bundy. Otherwise, why would public school board pass a policy that could only hurt the learning and mental health of these students? Ultimately, our students are in your hands, and anything as a result of this is on your hands. Thank you.
After Ms. Chavez, the next speaker will be Patty Lumston.
The last few months of political and personal agendas to support legislations that do not belong in schools is causing undue stress to teachers and students. The last time I stood before you, I asked the board to please take action to amend with the plan of action to keep the children safe, to integrate processes like those that are required when it is believed that a student may suffer from physical or mental abuse in their home. As students, we are more connected to what is occurring at our school and in homes than most adults and parents. The fear of homelessness and abuse of what may turn their lives upside down if being subjected to being outed is real. When does the board intend to communicate the plan to ensure a policy for both race and sexual preference that include processes to protect us from racial and homophobic slurs from individuals who want to physically and mentally harm others because of ignorance supported by this panel? We are kids learning to become adults, and when I look at each of you, it is difficult to believe that you are unable to put your opinions aside and allow us to go to school and learn instead of focus on your personal agenda to whitewash and normalize us. I see a group of individual adults who are seemingly intentionally ignorant of the challenges people of color and the LGBTQ+ community face, both internally and externally. Not only do I have to worry about self-love internally, but also externally. I am now faced with a highly probable chance that hate in my school will escalate and continue with no repercussions. History repeats itself, and as leaders, you are taking us backwards, instead of taking the time to understand differences and embrace them. School is for learning and growing. These policies hinder respect and understanding of diversity that Orange County has embraced since I've been a student here. These policies will segregate us, stunt personal growth, and they have already started to ignite a different level of negative tension that will likely turn into hate for those of us who do not fit into the white heterosexual mold of society. The news is full of school shootings occurring recently from individuals who, while at school, were bullied for their differences. At what point did adults stop caring about fights, drugs, and our education so we don't enter the world ignorant? What is there to stop from this, what is there to stop from this sort of hateful crime that's happening in our schools? It's all fun and games and a really good win for the board until someone's life is lost and the blood is on your hands. Thank you.
After Ms. Lumston, the next speaker will be Gwendolyn Lumston.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Patty Lumston. My daughter, Gwendolyn, is a rising senior at Orange County High School. I am opposed to the recently passed divisive content resolution and the pending sexually explicit resolution. We should be focused on ensuring a comprehensive education and a safe environment, not passing resolutions that are intentionally vague and incomplete. In the divisive content resolution, there is no mention of what will be included to ensure that our children are learning our country's history, the true history. The executive order that this resolution redundantly sources from at least provides these details. Virginia must renew its commitment to teaching our children the values of freedom of thought and diversity of ideas. We must equip our teachers to teach our students the entirety of our history, both good and bad. What is the point of Orange County's resolution? Regarding the sexually explicit resolution, defining sexual orientation and gender identity as a sexually explicit subject is obtuse and reckless. These are not sexually explicit subjects. These are subjects that we see in movies and series on Netflix. Including self-identification as a critical mental and emotional problem shows a true lack of understanding of its meaning by this board and is intentionally ambiguous. Self-identification is defined as the attribution of certain characteristics or qualities to oneself. Why is a student trying to understand themselves a mental health issue? When my father was suffering from Parkinson's, we needed help from caregivers, and the only characteristics that we cared about were whether that caregiver was caring, kind, empathetic, and skilled. Sexual orientation, gender identity, race or religion, or any other characteristic just didn't matter. Whether you find yourself in the emergency room needing medical care or in an aisle in Walmart needing assistance, how someone self-identifies does not matter. Why does it matter for our students? We need to ensure that our community and our children are prepared for the future. We need to understand the benefits of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We need to embrace the differences in others and provide a safe environment for our children to learn and grow into their true authentic selves and not be afraid to share their differences. Passing vague, incomplete resolutions that distract focus from critical matters is irresponsible. Thank you.
After Gwendolyn Lumston, the next speaker will be Teri Pace.
As I stated last time I spoke, my name is Gwen Lumston. I'm a rising senior at OCHS, a member of BRBDS, a member of multiple groups representing the youth throughout the county, and also a member of the LGBTQ+ community. I am proud to say that I have known this part of myself for many years, meaning it has had time to spread around the school. With this, I've had countless friends over the years come to me asking for advice or just simply wanting someone to talk to about this part of themselves that they can't find anywhere else in this town to talk about. Being in a town like Orange, which has been made very clear it is not accepting, I have many of these friends who are not as lucky as me to be in an accepting and loving household. I've heard my friends scared of being abused, thrown out, or worse, for just being themselves to their parents, to their family. These people were scared and felt they had nowhere else to turn to in this town but just some youth in this county to talk to. some youth in this county to talk to. I wish no one in the world would have to experience this, but yet it's a common occurrence in this town, and sadly, nothing is being done about it. In fact, the sexually explicit content, or in other words, the homophobic resolution is only worsening it, not helping. You have told us through many, many years of our education, make the world a better place and be the change you want to see in the world, yet you are not following those same sayings you have repeated into students' heads over and over again. Not only are you violating your words with this homophobic resolution, and yes, these are your words, you do represent the school, you are violating them with a resolution you already passed. The divisive content resolution, we haven't forgot about, you were probably hoping we would, it is a blatantly discriminatory resolution that is harming minority youth. I will never know what it is to be like a person of color, but I will always try my best to understand and educate myself. We can clearly see that this resolution is nothing but discriminatory, so why aren't you doing something about it? Why aren't you doing something about the constant racial hatred against students in your school system? Why aren't you fighting for these minority students and are instead hurting them? Something clearly needs to be done, so please listen and make the world a better place by not passing the sexually explicit content resolution and recall the divisive content resolution. Thank you.
After Ms. Pace, the next speaker will be Bobby Pace.
Well, in listening to all the speakers tonight, I do agree on one point, and I don't think that any sexually explicit material should be in our school. I think that's a waste of students' time and energy, and I think they should be focused on challenging academics, and that should be not part of our school. So, that's across the board, whether you're homosexual or heterosexual. There should not be fawning in the hallways. It should be right to class and get to work. Do your work and what you want to do on your time, you're right, it's your business, but it doesn't belong in the school, and our tax dollars shouldn't be paying for that. So, I think that don't have any sexually explicit material in school at all. And I also think that if there's going to be health class, it should be for girls and for boys, and don't mix the two because you're just asking for trouble. So, I think that, you know, maybe those changes need to be made, and it will greatly improve the outcome for our students academically and, I think, in their pursuits civically as to what they're interested in. But we don't need to confuse students with sexuality because teenagers, it's a very volatile time, it's a hard time, and they can do that on their own, with their friends or in their homes with their discussions with their family, but it doesn't belong in school. That is for the parents, and that is their authority. That should be respected, and so I think that that would be a good solution, just have no sexual explicit material in the school at all. I also, I don't understand at all about the divisive content not appearing in our school at all. I think it's really disappointing that we have intellectually, quote, elites. I don't think that they have a clue about life at all, and they want to talk about how great it is to be white. Well, life is a challenge for everybody. It doesn't matter what color you are, what your, everybody has issues, so nobody is issue-free, and everybody has challenges, and that's what's so great about America, is that we need to meet our challenges and do better because of them and not to make an excuse. And slavery is an inhumanity to man, and it is evil, but we never, we're not, Incas, Mayans, Aztecs, Native Americans, Egyptians, Africans, Romans, the Vikings, all had slaves because that was history, and nobody learns that history. When you defeat another tribe, which is, that's what they usually were tribes at that time, they're your slaves or they're dead. That's the way it worked. Thank you.
Good evening. Bobby Pace, resident of Unionville. I've been a lifelong resident of Orange County. I agree wholeheartedly with what my wife just said, and I would like to bring out two points in the sexually explicit materials resolution that is up for adoption and I think would clarify some of the ambiguities that have been brought up. Number one, it reads that the school board declares that students shall not be subjected and then, but not limited to curriculum materials, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know what that "but not limited to" phrase means. I don't see the significance or I don't understand why that's there. And then, secondly, I think further on down where it says relating to sexual orientation, gender identity, or any other sexually explicit subject, if the word "other" were stricken, I think that would clarify and clean that sentence up a lot. Strike the word "other." And then, thirdly, if you come to the last four words, and it says "explicit subject without explicit consent," I think if you would change, say "explicit subject," but then change that "explicit consent" to "express consent from the parents," I think that would help clarify and make it a lot smoother to read. I don't think this school board has any option but to adopt a resolution. It's passed into law, and once again, I want to commend those of you who sit up here and take this abuse time after time after time, when your heart and your soul and your efforts going into this, I think you've done a wonderful job. I think most rational people do not have a problem with rules and regulations as long as they understand what the rules and regulations are, and I'm sorry to say, but I think there's a lot of misinterpretation and a lot of misunderstanding among people in this room as to what the intent and what these resolutions are actually saying. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bowden, does that conclude all members?
It does.
Okay. At this time, I will declare public comment closed. And look to the board to see if they would like to have a few minutes recess, or would you like to continue?
Recession, please.
Okay. At this time, we will take a 10-minute recess then.[1100.66]
Back to order please. If you could find your seats. Thank you very much, and at this time we will continue with business in which I will turn it over to Dr. Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll start this evening with a question that we received regarding volunteers for the upcoming school year. And so we're very excited we're going to be having volunteers coming back into the schools. In order to get a firm grip on who's interested and some solid details on purpose of the volunteering, we're going to have volunteers reapply. And so Ms. Dawson and her team will be working on that revised application once we finalize all of our onboarding and hiring of our employees. And so I think the target date is August 1st to get that out. And so we're looking forward to having volunteers back into school. So I know that's been on a lot of folks' minds. So thank you very much. With that said, Madam Chair, members of the board, for superintendent's reports and recommendations, we'll start letter A, which is a proposed revision to policy GBQ, which falls in the realm of Ms. Dawson. So I'll turn it over to her to speak to you about this revision.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, members of the board. I bring before you School Board Policy GBQ, which is health insurance benefits for retirees. We are currently going through our reinsurance with our new insurance broker McGriff. And as we have done in the past, we're trying to align with the county as well. And so one of the areas that we are not aligned with are our retirees who reach 65 and become Medicare eligible. Currently, we allow them to stay on our insurance plan. They have to enroll in Part A and Part B. There's two problems with that. One is it's a liability for the school division and for the county. The second is they become overinsured. And so it's not physically responsible for us to continue to have our retirees on our health plan. It's too expensive. The benefits are too rich. They really need to come off. They'll be covered under Medicare, and then they can pick up a supplemental plan, which we can help facilitate that for them. We would like to propose that we have one year to roll this out. So anyone that is post-65, that's currently on our plan, or retired this year is post-65 and wants to remain on our plan. They can do so, and we'll have a carve-out plan available for them through Anthem, but that gives them a year. Most people will probably come off and go on a supplemental plan. And again, we'll help facilitate that, but we'd like to offer that as an option.
Questioned. Do we know, how many folks fall into this category as far as the age and that Medicare viability to get it?
I would have to pull that number, and I can get that and send that to the board. I can give you an exact figure. We don't have a ton of retirees that are going to fall into this category. A lot of them are still pre-65. So again, this would just be post-65. But we do have several.
I mean, it would be from 65 on, right?
Yes, yes.
So I mean...
Because once you reach age 65, then you qualify for Medicare Part A and Part B, and you have to enroll if you're retired, even if you have, if you're on our plan. And so what happens, Mr. Hopkins, is they're paying for the Medicare plans. They're paying us the premium cost. They're paying the entire cost of the premium, and they don't need to do that. So they're spending more money on rich benefits that they don't need. They can get a much more cost-effective plan for them that will still give them the same benefits that they have with the Medicare and with our insurance, if that makes sense.
But you're making the decision for them, right?
Right. We're saying, once you reach 65, you have to come off of our plan because you are Medicare eligible, and you do have to enroll. There's no choice at that point when they retire.
Does this cost us any money?
It does, yes. Because we, since we're self-funded, they're paying their premiums, but any claims are paid from the school division. So their premiums offset that, but if you have a high claimant, then the school division and the county are absorbing that cost.
I can get that. The older they get, the more liability they are to us.
Potentially.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I did research surrounding schools and other divisions and sent an email out to our Region Four just to make sure we weren't off-base. And we're pretty much the only school division that has a policy like this. Everybody else either doesn't offer a retiree plan or has the language in there that once you reach the Medicare age, you come off. So this isn't aligned with what other divisions are doing.
And just to clarify, they are still paying the premium of the insurance cost.
Yes.
It's not the school that's paying it. It's they're paying the insurance.
They pay the, they pay the premium, and then the school division pays for the claims because we're self-funded.
Okay, yes.
I know, just real quick, I know time is, yes, and some jurisdictions and local municipalities have incentives. Obviously longevity for somebody, for instance, who stays in the system and works 25 or 30 years. And you know, that healthcare premium may come in handy. They stick around. There's an incentive at the end of the line to say, hey, we're going to help you. This is something to think about.
It definitely is, and we've talked about that. We just haven't had the budget for it. And with, I think, what we're getting ready to experience for our insurance renewal, yeah, we're going to have to have some conversations, but we definitely keep that on the table for sure.
Thank you.
Yes. And this is just for review, and if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Madam Chair, members of the board, we'll move forward to letter B and a proposed revision to policy IKC. And I will invite Doctors Honig and Anderson. I think Dr. Honig will probably take the lead here since this impacts secondary most. This is with respect to some language that was added, to my understanding, pre-COVID to address this policy and looking for a little bit more in the realm of flexibility to enhance our practice to meet student needs. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Honig.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Hornick. This is, this, the request here is to take out the assessments on the 50% summative and 50% other. That was put in, if you remember, those of you who were on the board, when we went into the COVID closures and students were at home. That was to help us through that because it took away the old weights that we had. And what we're asking is that we make this policy, what's in green now, so that it's more of a balanced approach. And this approach will allow us the flexibility to work with our principals and our teachers at each building level and to develop the most age and grade-appropriate weights for the different categories. So it will be a balanced approach. It will have, still have summative and formative types of assessments, but it may look different at an elementary school and at the high school.
Any questions at this time?
No, I totally support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And our last one here is letter C, approval of policy revisions. This document was presented at the work session on June 27th. And at request of board members, there were some language amendments that were made. And so Ms. Byram has reflected those. And this is just to bring this back to your attention in an updated format. Again, this is the same chart and policies that were brought forward at the last meeting.
Board members, are we comfortable with this?
I believe all my recommendations last time were added, yes.
Okay, all right.
I have no problems with it. I've looked through them. It didn't raise any flags to me, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept these.
I move to accept the proposed policy revisions as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is Head Start Policy Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on July 13th, so just a few days ago. Gave the school board report out. Summer school completed in June. It wasn't full, but the teachers and the children did an amazing job. Pre and post-screening, they did make progress. Currently, Head Start is fully staffed. That was current as of last week. Procedure items were being updated. There were new locks on the doors at Teak. There's a lot of excitement about the SROs. So just wanted to thank the county for doing that. It's been a huge thing for, I think, all of us. Residency policy draft was to, it was presented to improve language regarding the housing status, just to make it more inclusive about homelessness and transancy, and that passed unanimously. Overage policy eligibility requirements changed to allow families to be involved who are close to the threshold but are, you know, a little bit over with the income, but still are going to be needing services. The Head Start office did not say it was not allowed, and it was modified to have a cutoff time limit for August 15th. So by then, we will be looking at approving families that might be a little bit over that threshold. And the final policy is the financial incentive policy, allowing for staff to get an incentive at any time if there's extra funding. And there's going to be some conversations that need to be had, and that's tabled until our next meeting.
Thank you. So at this time, can we have closed session motion, please?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We have closed session, and we'll go this way.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order and Ms. Quinturne, can we have closed session certification please?
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Roll call please.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Madam Pay- uh, Ms. Paint.
Aye.
Ms. Quinturne?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: five yes votes, no no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Thank you. And at this time, disposition of personnel actions, do they come with your recommendations, Dr. Hornick?
Yes ma'am, they do. To approve as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a motion please?
I move to accept the recommended approval of the personnel agenda and addendum to include salary adjustment, transfer, resignation, and employment of staff.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Well, second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, there are there any board member comments?
Just want to welcome Dr. Hornick aboard and he's sporting the good colors. So thanks for everybody for coming out tonight and taking time to engage. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I agree. Welcome to the team. We're very glad to have you.
Thank you.
Alright, with that being said, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.